Seventy-five entitled. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper release of this open public meeting was provided within the notice of September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mail to the township clerk, sent to tap into Nutley, advertised in the lovely sun on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and posted on the district website. Last one.
Okay.
Mr. Bania. In the back school.
So.
It's about.
One.
About.
Hmm?
Come on, come on. Come here, that's what.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is the slowest spring this year. Telefocus is great, so I'm happy to work. I do want to thank you for your visit and talk with our first and fourth meeting of the school year and take this as an opportunity to present many of the happening in district. Very exciting district, we had a wonderful opening. And most of the time, we spend a lot of time talking about our facility improvements. We have major shifts going on in areas, our security areas. I wanted to share that with you. Testament to all of the work of our professionals in district. Not only our teachers who work hard every day, working in buildings, the agency for doing professional or related services, security officers, we very appreciate you. Of course, our administrators are a lot of this, but probably based on the majority of schools, I want to share some of it with you. So this is the back to school update. I'd like to share each board game, like to highlight different things going on in district, the need for by time of the year. And I'd like to start here because it's a particular update, so either you go to the first one, you can see the bottom, and I'll go through that. But I do believe the beginning of this year is very exciting, listening to things going on in the classroom, we're around the classroom, we're supporting the classroom. I do want to mention and tie these to some of our district roles this year of the school. Like we're part of the online tech trade, what that means is we have teachers who have a content area, depth of content area, teaching, in some cases, math and science, in some cases, it's all D L A, depending on if they're a two, or, or three section grade level. We do have teachers teaching every student in the grade level, students who are taking with teachers. This is a shift from the self-contained strategy of the region in district. To highlight the benefits of creating more meaningfulness, having teachers that either people that are competent, the more they teach it, we're hoping to see as our teacher shifts in our data set based on students changing classes in the grade. We also think this is a head start in getting to those middle-level years that would be our district goal three, we're hoping to promote their growth and focus on their growth this year. We have one in Performance Matters, it's a data warehouse for our teachers. If we're four, five, six years, if you remember this, this reviews this exclusively to like internal, internal data sets next to each other. It's a very powerful tool to help us understand how our students are doing, not only academically, but social emotional indicators we're doing here as well, allows us to understand, make recommendations, and ask a lot of questions. So we're happy to bring Performance Matters back. My new is as well as solo is working, so there's coordinators to get all the data in for common assessments. So we're happy that this year will bring us back to many data conversations that the pandemic may have left out as students were online. Happy that. We are excited to keep up our student portion of the program. It's a curriculum, social emotional curriculum, Yale Institute of Social Emotional Learning, it's a best practice. We are starting with our middle school, high school lessons, except for the advisory period of middle school, and our first high school lesson, I believe, starts next week, as we get very close to the state. This is target curriculum for all students. With all the challenges today's environment, so we're excited to bring that social emotional in the classroom. We are happy to announce we have thirteen full-day preschool classrooms, especially in preschool expansion in four schools. We're excited, this is roughly about two hundred students, we're servicing with free whole-day preschool, and it's just a year and making, so we're very excited and happy. We see this as a big initiative in Nutley, as students, five, eight, and three, four-year-olds, provide high-quality preschool education. We go to identifying needs much earlier, providing those needs, also provide students with the best social emotional play curriculum practices as they go through creative curriculum. And the district will benefit tremendously from this in the years to come. We're happy to get up to about one-third of our student capacity. I do want to mention our continued partnership with Cole University, Cole University with a list of other dual enrollment programs we have here, from Rutgers University, the Seattle University, to Kane University, we partner with these universities, and provide stations, we now students taking online classes as soon as this spring, students work at college students, something both in gym, which is very exciting. And this leads to students. Very expect this happens this year. We're also continuing our relationship with the academic medical. Stop to help us with classes and clinical experience this year working with our students. We're happy to continue that, and it really takes up in my books. We also have lots of support in place, we have just a lot of different teams, not only our strategies, teachers, our iron res process, assessment teams, both here providing more students, it's a side of the equation, to help students where they are to meet them where they are. Early elementary, upper elementary, very fourth grade especially, as we have applied for the tiering grant as well. And then the math professional development. Following the math program, we decided to focus on math professional development with a math instructional coach, as well as target PD, of all teachers, and how much you score in the revolver today, we're looking forward to what we're seeing on this academic year as we get into springtime. So in what moment on the curriculum side, I wanted to start there, so often district we talk about the great facility improvements, we talk about extra curriculars, but I want to give it to our staff, our teachers, working on big things in the curriculum world, and seeing the benefit for our students. Next piece I want to highlight as we come back to school is our second grades, security and safety. Support. We have collaborated work, this department, as well as New Jersey State Police, our security manuals, we get feedback from them. Police Department has a wonderful, and has been doing our shows with us this year to give us feedback. We look to continue. Assessment teams being open. These teams not only get high risk, but also building security. Working. And they. Eighty steps. We have anonymous reporting to water, like, I could record something anonymously, this was that recommendation we stayed with, and the US. That sees something, and ability to say something, or stumble, key, that you're people, we need to associate it. They will do this year, so I want to like that. Politicians in district are wonderful, and they're one in district, we're waiting to one, one was the paperwork. What they provide us is a key link to clinicians in district without students having to leave districts, it returns students to school quicker, gives us a relationship with a psychiatrist once a week that have in district value evaluations on. This is key, families for students for the district, because it gives us information so we can call up with them, talk to these people, those home groups, and check in on students by PD, or staff, and faculty, that is really a critical part of our approach this year, for all intents and purposes, this is we're working. I do want to recognize the work of the keys that we are updating, we have updated along our district security manuals, through common rest practices, through network, that the on the. And you can hear us safely, so October sixth, professional development day. Everyone in district that needs to know about the criminals, threat, and policy, he can call and block down, they can call, or actually, communication happens in real time, the messaging, the police are involved, you're related, the schools that have begun to use this, this benefit, their goals, the feedback received, the places, or a cost regarding the system, so we love to continue roll this out, there are other buildings. October, we fully, fully, fully implemented by December this year. We also repeat the entire district, the entire district, with some specific pieces, go down to different security levels, so we want to keep. So here's some key improvements we've made that you may or may not see, but there is a lot going on in the public schools with regards to security, and we think this is a very important part of our school district. Finally, some things that you may have noticed, we have seen, we have facilities around district this summer, we see more facilities in the past twenty-four years, and I just want to highlight something that we have done. I want to say we've done many of these things by working with our township very closely, our bed, commissioners are working very close, and are able to do some of these projects, are we getting facilities around team. I will show you some pictures, and pictures I will show you, the spring garden around the floor, was destroyed through a flood around the weekend last year. All right, we go back, I just have a review, we go back. Leaving school ground floor, we prepare flooring, we put some pipes around the John Walker Middle School ground floor, part of the board office moving, was to gain valuable classroom space, provision, this year with two additional preschool classes, we'll tell you that. Right for the purpose of days, you might not think of a picture of that, but that's something that's one we have out here. No, the nice ones, obviously, we've been on some work into the outside, with the help of Board of Division. Our wave ring is being redone right now, I look forward to lay off of our open with that space, and then our media center, the participation after the summer, we'll be looking forward to that over some time at the end of the virtual December. I do want to show you some group pictures of our high school front, with the landscape, the grass, the trees, go to their slide please. We did neighbors and all the concrete work around the high school, it looks beautiful. It's like, this would be the, I don't have this list, with the help of the Lincoln School PTO, we're able to look at the media centers and revision that looks like with new book selections, that looks more like Montez Noble than traditional library, totally had a role in serving two weeks ago. Students are excited, and it's very. School. It's like. This would be the John Walker Middle School preschool area, so we took the board office and made two preschool classrooms with bathrooms down there in preschool, and we're coming thirty kids, thirty preschool students in this area, and it seems to be working very well. This would be one of our preschool classes at Spring Garden Elementary School, with the flood, we're able to redo the forest, all the walls, the edge of the area, put four bathrooms in, four preschool rooms, and kindergarten A B A rooms. This is very, very important, bringing teachers, students, that youth age rooms, as students that age have a bathroom, a classroom is very big. Have to do that, and the spaces are very necessary. Forest in the basement, those two classrooms related to schools, and the forest turned up very nicely. To conclude this presentation, I just wanted to add a recommitment by the district to refocus our conversations in a couple of critical areas, stepping from last year in communication. The district set goals, related to some to refocus and allow the conversation around our code of conduct, our attendance, our dress code, both policies and regulations. We drafted it in regulations over the summer, but happy to say, if you're having a positive effect already, we have referenced our different agencies of discipline, of teachers and administration, and our population several times this year, and build consistency and accountability across the district. As we move forward, I ask the parents to help support us in these areas, as we believe these practices help to be a whole educational product, so as we go through the year, be able to take it one at a time, and make sure the work, take the bill of some very traditional educational practices in the area on the, and it matters to come to school, parents please help us with this, and students, and students in the school, as well as dress code, and that we were sort of emphasis for all of us this year. One, the Board of Education, you can't rely on these, you can't represent any of these things, it's a part of that, your support, the Board of Commissioners, the same, your support means a lot, our teachers, administrator, the service staff, thank you so much, and Mr. President, if they will be able to take questions at this time. Are there any questions in the board? Are there any questions in general?
So, in the presentation, and all the work that we mentioned, the entire Benner show, and everyone that was in hard work, everybody got to see through that presentation, very impressive, and there's a lot of work that was done in a short period of time. I get a motion for a little bit more minutes? Oh, baby? Mr. Bania, I think that's a good answer.
Problem, I think it was the president. I woke up this morning, watched the news, and realized that people were in green, so for a tragic event that happened over the weekend, it's my political issue tied. I want to reflect and send our prayers to Armidale Long Island, us asking out there this week, and two educators lost their life, nowhere's as square as it said. My folks would have been. Most of our buildings have been back to school now, and thanks to custodians, buildings and grounds, for getting building ready, for their great work with our parents, special thanks to, and thanks to custodians, buildings and grounds, for getting building ready, for their great work with our parents, special thanks to the students, I heard they welcomed their parents there, like, so, thank you so much. And our high school, back to school night on Thursday. Results from our spring testing cycle are in, we are in the process of analyzing and sorting, parents will be receiving their individual student scores by mail within several weeks, and there will be a district-wide presentation in October for it. I do want to thank Mr. Gaines. Committees, we've asked, great conversations, thinking about our communities.
Looking forward, I do want to highlight the Nutley Columbus Day Ceremony and Parade. Our students will be part of the celebration with our band marching in the parade, and students at the celebration, we look forward to that event, we do look forward to the Rotary Club New Teacher Dinner, which is tomorrow night, at the middle school. The Nutley High School Back to School Night is Thursday. On Wednesday, October fourth, the Nutley High School Counseling Office will offer an evening event about the college application process, followed by information on financial aid. It's a great night for parents to attend who are new to the process, and I encourage you to do so. On October eighteenth, the School Counseling Office will provide a Common Lunch Workshop to help students complete their Common App. Parents of students with seniors, or even juniors, this is a great event to attend during the school day. And the Counseling Office will continue and follow up with a college admissions panel on the evening of October nineteenth. We'll have different representatives here from different colleges and universities to field questions and talk about the application process. This is another great night, October is a big night for, a big month for our school counseling department, and I encourage you to take advantage of all of these events. Finally, we've had a great opening to the school year, we're on track to have a great year, and we continue to look toward a bright future, but we will continue to take one step at a time, day to day, focusing on our students, our staff, and our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bania. Our student report we have with us, Soham Ghazwami, he's the Student Council President.
Hi, my name is Soham Ghazwami. As of right now, our two main focuses are, one of which is in, like, creating a more inclusive space in Nutley High School. Mr. Helm noted that we have many students in student council, but not many are from a wide range of students, so he mentioned having one representative from each athletic team, as well as club, included within STUCO, so we could hear a more wider range of voices from the students. And our other main focus is homecoming. We have Spirit Week coming up next week, we have the Homecoming Dance, either on the Oval, or inside, depending on the weather, on the sixth, and then we have the Tailgate and Homecoming Game on the seventh of September, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. You're, as we, as we say every, every meeting, you're welcome to stay, but if you have homework to do, or some, something else to do, you're more than welcome to, to leave, but thank you for that. Committee reports, Mr. Kaczynski, academic? I'm sorry, administration.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Administration Committee met on September fourteenth, myself, Mr. Riley, Mr. Balsamo. We discussed the, the middle school mural, which has been a topic of discussion, we continued that discussion that night. We talked about the facilities update, which I think you covered tonight very well. We talked about the, the meeting between the commissioners and the Board of Ed, which has been ongoing and been very productive, and I wanted to thank the commissioners, just as you did, for their help and support, and those meetings are continuing. We talked briefly about different material that we're looking at for proposals coming forward. We talked about the COVID guidance, we talked, as you'll see on tonight's agenda, about the custodial sub-rate, which in my opinion is long overdue, just as we're having difficulty finding teachers, we're having difficulty finding people in the custodial maintenance and buildings and grounds, so hopefully the increase will help that. And then overall, we talked about the ongoing work at the facilities, our next meeting is scheduled for October the nineteenth, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. Ms. Quirk, academic?
Yes. Mr. President, the Academic Committee met on September fourteenth. During that meeting, Mr. Bania and Mrs. Locan Solo reviewed the initial district and building level student performance data, results from the spring twenty twenty-three testing cycle. Mr. Bania shared and previewed, previewed a New Jersey Department of Education request for participation in the New Jersey Health Survey. Mr. Bania also discussed the upcoming meeting between Caldwell University and members of the district and high school staff, and Mr. Bania provided an update for, to the three-sixty smarter self-application rollout. Mr. Gaines and Mr. Vicarello joined the committee to discuss the proposed spring band field trip. Mr. Bania also shared information about the New Jersey Department of Health Guidance for the upcoming respiratory illness season. The committee discussed updated subrates for custodians and other personnel. Mr. Bania updated the committee with regards to facility improvements, and Mrs. Locan Solo reviewed field trip and professional development requests, and the next meeting of the Academic Committee is tentatively set for Thursday, October nineteenth, at six-thirty PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Quirk. Mr. Scotty, finance?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on September eighteenth. Mr. De Pisa discussed the substitute custodian, maintenance, and grounds pay rate, project pricing being obtained for joint projects district-wide, the benefit claim cost from September fifteenth, and continued updates from maintenance projects being completed district-wide. Mr. Bania updated the committee on the status of the P E C letters from the D O E submission from solutions architecture and COVID protocols if needed. There was discussion on scheduling the next committee meeting, but no date was determined.
Mr. Scotty. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on reports, resolutions, and all school-related matters. Our Board Regulation Number zero one six seven allot twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all those wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated, and please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address this board. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none? Can I get a motion for academic, Ms. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to do academic resolution, one to repeat, second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Delia? Yes. Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes. Yes. Can I get a motion for administration?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I move resolutions one through four.
Second? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, just a quick, more of a comment than a discussion. I just want to echo Mr. Kaczynski's feelings about the proactiveness in the substitute for custodians. I know this is substituting is a issue in the district overall, and I'm very happy to see as a educator and board member, the proactive approach to trying to bring in more recruit. So hopefully, our recruiting efforts do pay off, but I can't help but thank the committee and also the administration for this forward-thinking of bringing in supplemental custodial assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Delia. Any further comment? Roll call?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Dr. Delia? Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty? Mr. Ferraro?
Yes. Motion for finance resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move finance resolutions one through 15 as written.
Certainly.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Delia? Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes, abstaining, yes to one through four, abstaining on five, and yes through six through 15. Mr. Delia, personnel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move Personnel Resolutions one and two as written.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Delia?
Yes, with exception, resolution 1.8.3.1, take no part.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes. Okay, is there any old business that come before the board? Any new business? Okay, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel. Be it further resolved that the results of the discussions will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed sessions no longer exist. Can I get a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everyone.